Next call is regular meeting on twenty Tuesday, council order. Six thirty PM, Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five. Copy of the meetings act is posted on the back wall of the council chambers. Little call, Sarah.
Adam.
Karine.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Please stand for the pleasure meeting.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number two, here we go, minutes from previous meetings, what's our regular meeting? June tenth, and then our special meeting on the evening seventeenth.
I remember we accept the minutes from June ten and June seventeenth as presented.
Sarah.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Three claims and payroll, any questions on the claims and payroll?
I don't have any.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve claims of payroll.
Sarah.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Aye.
Before reports, manor and meetings.
All right, our last meeting, we have still continued to change the date and time at this time for another couple months. So we're doing meetings at eleven thirty, I'm trying to see how that works for us. Some things that we discussed and talked about, some department head quarterly updates were given. Staffing needs at this time, we're still looking for a night LPN or RN. We're still looking for a director of nurse. Social services has been hired and letters have been given out. Still looking for housekeeping and laundry. And then PRN, part-time CNA work is what we're still looking for. The bio laws and board training update, we had tabled that last month. Melissa Huffer and I've had no time to connect at this time yet to continue to work on those things. Bark and Anderson, no update yet today on that. So all I know is they've done the dirt work samples and haven't heard back yet. We talked about the expansion committee, the drug policy, we've tabled that, has had no time to work on that either yet. And then we thanked Tracy for her years of service. We did start work, election of officers, we have our new president, Melissa Huffer is the new president. But we tabled all the rest of positions due to the fact that one member was missing. And then we didn't have a new member assigned yet, so we kind of decided we'd wait for the rest of election of officers on that. And we were just really brainstorming on employee retention and different ideas in regards to that, but that's about all we did was brainstorm on that. The other thing I want to update you on, two different things that's going on at the facility. We had a complaint survey on ourselves for self-reporting, so any resident falls and has an injury, we have to report ourselves if there is an injury, so I reported it to the state of Nebraska because we did have one that fell and broke a bone. And in that process, they came out because they didn't know if we had done enough assessment on it. When they left, they told me I was getting a tag because it was a camp nurse that was on. And our training process is tough with camps coming in and trying to get them to know A to Z in one night. They told me I was getting a tag today, the tag came, and we were deficiency free, so they did not tag us. So they felt we did enough assessments based on the documentation when they came out to do it. Still in my window for my survey, but they didn't do the survey process at the same time, so we're still in that window. And the other thing I want to update with you is on Friday night, we don't know, there something happened when it rained and stormed here. We lost our point click care system throughout the facility, which is our EMARS and all the charting we can do on that system. I got called in about eleven thirty that night, was working with, Grant Doomer was on call, so him and I were working on it. With point click care, I worked till seven o'clock the next morning, went home, went to bed for an hour, and then Tim and I worked again. All day Saturday, pretty much till eight o'clock that night, on and off with point click care, the Plainview telephone. And with Tim, we worked, my hotspot would pick up, but the in-house would not work. I could work from home though, so it wasn't making sense with the commercial part of it. It came down to it after Saturday night, it was back to Plainview telephone. It would go to Plainview telephone, but that Plainview telephone was like this out, and we're stuck out here, is what was going on. As of Sunday morning, I ran to Norfolk, we now have a hotspot with Verizon, affordable one, because my phone died on Sunday at nine thirty in the morning. We had no more hotspot off of that anymore. So now we have a contract with Verizon on a monthly basis as an emergency plan. And as of today, about twelve thirty, we're back live. We got some internal fixing to do because when we shut everything down and changed IP addresses, it really changed a lot of different things throughout the facility. So we did activate an emergency throughout the weekend, allowed everybody to be able to remote access and do a lot of different things. We're amazing, trying to figure things out and just working together as a team and doing the best they can. But we did put an emergency policy in place that evening and handled it as best as we could. So we do have a new contract with Verizon, it'll be immediately on Sunday, so. And we'll see how much you guys owe me for my telephone bill, because I'm afraid what it might be. Yeah, it might be, because I mean, Tim nor Grant thought my hotspot would slow down, but never quit, and it quit, so I don't know how much data it went through my whole year or what it did, but at least it was a temporary fix in the process. We'll see.
Technology's great if it works.
Right, if it works.
Well, good job for solving all that.
Yeah, things work with extra mile, please. Any other questions for me?
I do have a question on, it says Amazon and retirement in a couple places on the.
We get a lot of things through Amazon.
I just was wondering what their retirement meant.
Oh, retirement.
Retirement, yeah.
So we have a retirement plan as a benefit, employee benefit?
Gotcha.
Oh, no, no, Amazon retirement.
Retirement, yeah.
Okay, so we made a policy, we had another staff person retire, and you can, we had a policy in place due to that state audit, and we were able to buy something for that staff person, go back to how we used to. The last two retirements, I personally paid for myself because we didn't have that policy in place. So we went back, made the policy, we're all good, and purchased a retirement plot for that staff person like we did everybody else.
Sorry, this is heavy, but on mine, it was for Sarah, it has an H on the end, just so you know.
All right, I can do that.
Thanks, Julie. Who's Chief Christine?
So June was a pretty busy month for Andrew and I. I do want to start by telling you that Andrew's now fully certified firearms instructor, patrol rifle, and handgun, so he can train any law enforcement officer in the state of Nebraska. He cannot, we've had a lot of inquiries about personal and public, he can't do that. You have our number, your numbers in front of you, do you guys have any questions about anything on there?
Almost twice as much as last month.
I know, well, the, I did take the time, and I'm glad you had mentioned it, Karine, like we, I haven't checked those businesses at nighttime. And it was time, so that's what the business watches, watch was, it's thirty eighth that I checked. So that's why that jumped that number up a little bit. We've had a lot of multiple agency assists. They've helped us out with a lot of stuff going on in Plainview, State Patrol, Pierce County even, and Oak County. Our thefts has gone down because two of our bigger players are in jail right now and probably going to be gone for a while. So hopefully that will, the thefts will continue to stay at a low. So a couple of things I want to talk about is the personnel manual. I've actually had some time to go through it, it's not completed yet. But I do want to get with Tyler and Karine and you, Bob, and just go through what I have, and then send it out to Kyle for Kyle's input on anything that I have in there. Our nuisances, Andrew went through and checked all the nuisance properties that we had this afternoon. There were two, three, four, five, six, because they're all up for abatement. I think yesterday was the day that they came up for abatement, right?
Seventh.
The seventh, which is yesterday. Okay, so two oh eight South King, cars, they need to be moved, okay? Item A Miller, one oh six West Locust needs to be abated. Five oh L needs pilchur, Roger and Lindsay Stewart, it's improved, they're working on it. Multiple bikes and motorcycles, we can go clean it up or we can let them continue to abate. On the agenda, it has something about inoperable and vehicles, well, I got something, and I'm sure Jeremy has something too that we can talk about when we get down to that item. Steve Bodett, Tony Bodett, it's under his name on North Fourth, nothing's been done. Again, we've got about half dozen cars there that need to be taken care of. Barb Frederick, it's been approved, I don't know if she's beautifying, spreading stuff out, like to make it look better, but I think let's let her continue to work on that and see what she does, because it really, she really has cleaned up a lot of that stuff. John Runnels over there on North Ninth, no change, so that's one that we need. So we've got three, two oh eight South King cars, which we can discuss later, how we're going to handle that. One oh six West Locust, and then we're all set for Steve Bodett and John Runnels, so. I also, we, I've been getting a lot of requests from other agencies and places throughout the United States for patches, and we don't have any current ones. So Bud Moore, I don't know if you guys are familiar with him, has designed three, and I kind of like them. I didn't print enough for everybody, but here's one of them, I can pass it around. And then I'm open for suggestions, or if you guys like one more than the other. And then there's this one, which I really liked. And then one that's similar to that, but I'd like to get some patches made, because we don't have any. Stop sign update at the railroad crossing. The safety manager for BNSF said that they cannot add stop signs to their property. So my gut's telling me that they know that the last train accident that we had was their fault because they have cut back a lot of those trees, and the time before that, they did not.
Brother shredder in.
They did. But I'm still going to keep on them about a stop sign, and then maybe continue to discuss getting some type of a railroad crossing signal there other than that stupid little blink and flash of light, because I don't want this to happen to, we've been fortunate up to this point where it's not been a vehicle, a car, and a family get hurt. So I'm going to try to stay on top of that, talk with commissioners, see what we can do about that. Because half, like I said, half the street's owned by county and half the street's owned by city, so we can probably meet in the middle and come up with something. National night out in August, that's for law enforcement and fire department, first responders basically. And I think Courtney, does the fire department have a national night out in August? They don't. So I think I'd like to get in contact with somebody at the department, maybe we can come together and do something for Plainview where it brings the local, the community out, and burgers and hamburger, burgers and hot dogs and so on and so forth. I think that's, that's all that I have for right now, and we can discuss the cars when we get back to agenda on.
See, they're doing, the chambers doing their back-to-school thing August twentieth, if you want to do it that same night.
I do remember you saying that, okay. I'll just, I'm gonna write that date down. That might be a good way to cohort some.
Because the CHI does their appreciation deal that night, so, okay.
Perfect, okay.
Any abatements, Kristin?
Yes.
Can you get with Jeremy, and I know Jeremy's been super shorthanded lately.
So are we. I mean.
So Jeremy, you still short, is James back?
We'll make work.
James has been gone? I saw James the other day. Okay, well, I can't tell his guys what to do, he's gonna have to let me know.
You don't know, I mean, figure out a time, figure out a time that you can do it and they can do it.
We're available anytime. I told Jeremy, I said, you tell your guys when you want them to do it, let Andrew or I know, and we'll be there. Because when we are on duty, we're on duty twenty-four for the days that we're working. So I need him to pick a day with his guys, let us know, and we will be there. And that's been the same rule for the last several months, so.
You could have more than one, besides Jeremy, the whole Friday.
Well, no, 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 I mean his workers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll schedule, now we know we got four of them to do. Yep.
So, but yeah, we can get together and do that, he just needs to let me know when he wants us there, and we'll be there, so.
Can you find a seventy-two degree day? No.
Can you, can you, can you predict that, looking at your crystal ball, because mine's not working, so.
They can't even predict not raining anymore.
I like the patches with the eagles, I don't know about everybody else.
Can I go back on one thing? So sorry. There is a temp, because I have to have a deal win, has to have a title as of Friday. So we do have a contract temp coming in from Colorado, she'll be arriving Thursday and staying in Neely. So we will, her name is Jackie, so you'll see us a different face maybe in the community a little bit. And she has a contract for us till October eighteenth at this time, through our temp agency, which is very expensive.
What kind of person is she? What's her title?
Director nurse, she'll be the director nurse.
Yeah, the one, she's the.
Yeah. Is Pam about done then?
Friday.
Economic development.
The only things I have, I am finishing the loan paperwork for Cool Beans for funding for their building. So I should have that at the August meeting for you guys to review. And then we have a new community planner for NINED, Tracy Scoreletter, she is going to come to our August meeting just so you guys can all meet her and kind of give you a brief overview of NINED, what services they offer, and if you have any questions on what they can do for us, so that's pretty much all I have right now.
Jeremy, I think. Okay, we'll move on to city superintendent report.
Obviously, Clumby's off well, we're happy with it. Other than that, we have been shorthanded lately, hopefully we're going to be almost full, full staff now. We're still short, Agadi's out for a while with some medical issues, but we're still going along. We're not getting as much obviously done as we want to this summer yet, but we're still moving forward. Pine Street, we're just finishing up on the water services right now, sewer is complete. We have our walkthrough with the contractors on Friday, and hopefully they'll start, you'll see the equipment show shortly, so. We went through our C and D renewal, walked through that, cleaned it all up, and so far we should be good to go. All we have to do is go through with the engineers and finalize the permit, so. That's where you did a great job cleaning it up and getting it going, and we're going with the other guys.
Yeah, it does look good.
Absolutely. It's group effort, so it looked good.
Bob, Jeremy, can I ask you a quick question, sorry?
Sure.
I've had a few people stop by the house, which is fine, whatever. But wanting to know, on the weekend, wanting to know if I can open at the C and D, and I said I cannot. Is there any way that we can do a weekend, like just pick a weekend and have somebody available to dump for those people that, like Alex Schonberger is one of them, he was, the only time he can really tear down a trailer house is on the weekend, and he wants to get that stuff out. So something maybe we can get together and talk about, maybe once a month or something, to have somebody available? I know you're shorthanded, but.
We talked about doing a transfer station warm here coming up, like usually do like on a Saturday. We got to coincide with Sheaf and Gray, because we have to use our scales.
Sure, yeah, okay.
But yeah, I, he's never, he's never talking about, which is weird, because usually talks about.
He just stopped this past weekend. I mean, he, he's a one example, just saying, so.
Yep. Yep, yep, so.
I told him, I said, I can't answer that for you, but I can certainly find out, so maybe.
Yeah, I would think that anybody could call Jeremy and, you know, if you like that trailer, that certainly could be done.
Okay, so. He's ready for those to come down, and he's.
He's kind of tearing down now, so.
Yeah, so.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, not, not because he stopped and asked me, but because, I mean, I think that we'd probably get a lot of people to use the transfer station in C and D and get rid of some nuisance crap, if it maybe open a weekend a month or something, so.
Something to talk about, I think, too.
Sorry about that.
At least during the summer, when people can still get there. I don't know how many wants to go out there in the winter time, I don't.
I don't.
I know it helped my husband, because you know, he's not available, and so I either have our neighbor, or somebody like that.
Right. Right.
So yeah, should talk about that.
Absolutely.
Sure, we can put it on next once again. Just to talk about it.
Yep.
Something we can do. City attorney Kyle, you got anything right now?
I didn't see it reflected anywhere else but the hard matter, so they paid the principal now.
Oh yeah, we did get the check too, so that's all.
That's the mess.
It's all paid.
Of course, it's a settlement, right?
Thank you, everybody's happy.
I would hope so.
Great, thanks, Kyle. Number five, mayor board appointment, mayor board, or mandar board.
Mander board. You might want to appoint somebody.
Yeah, mandar board appointment. Mander board Wayne Rassismann for a three-year term.
I make a motion to approve Wayne Rassismann for a three-year term on the mandar board.
Second.
A second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Jody.
Skip over number six for now, go to number seven.
Nope, you'll have to go to number nine.
Number nine, discussion action, resolution number seven two eight, signing of five three one one program agreement. PI two five three three, city of Plainview handyman.
So this is just the final agreement for the funding that we're wanting to get for the handyman for fiscal year twenty-six. They don't have twenty-seven on here yet. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but they cut the state, everybody their funding went down thirty percent statewide, so kind of had to do some rearranging in the handyman budget, just a little advertising. We had thought about maybe getting another part-time driver, nixed that for now. Just kind of trying to make cuts where we can, not saying we can't spend it, we just won't get reimbursed for it. So all this is, is saying that you guys are okay with moving forward and accepting what they put in there for the budget. It did start July one, but they got it back to me kind of the middle of June, so it'll, it's effective July one. It's their fiscal year start, but if you have any questions on anything in there, otherwise if you guys approve, it'll send it back to them tomorrow.
Are you saying that you're looking for something to be added for twenty twenty-six? Is this every year?
This is a, usually it's every two years we do it. They only sent me the, this budget that's behind there is only for twenty-six, is what they're approving for me for twenty-six, and then they'll send me twenty-seven later. So they're just getting everybody through twenty-six right now. Twenty-seven might change, they might get some additional funding, and they can rearrange numbers for twenty-seven, but they're getting us twenty-six for right now.
Or none at all.
Or none at all, I mean, whatever, so.
At this point, I would move to accept the, my comments to contract.
Ah, it's a resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution to accept FTA section five three one one, the agreement for the federal aid funds.
Second.
A second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Number ten, discussion action agreement for provision of limited professional services. Fluent discharge improvements project number three five one dash PI dash Miller Associates Consulting Engineers.
Okay, so this is, here's a contract with our engineers for our lagoon, this is for the land applying. We've talked about it for years now, I think we've been finally approved in state. I've talked to Lincoln before on their pivot, we talked, I mean, first one ago, remember back, we talked about pinning it out to see who, you know, wanted it more. Their was the only one that qualified around there, because all the ones around there have tiles, so you're not allowed to obviously land apply in it, and you're going right back into the ditch. So they're the closest option we have, I've talked to them before, we'll get back together with them and start really getting down to the bolts of what, what they feel is necessary for a contract between us. So this is the first start for the Millers to go through with the state, start working on it.
Did we have to do this, Jeremy, because what evaluation is there looking?
They lowered the award level, so we have too much, so we have to land apply, we don't meet the discharge. So when they apply, the, all those regulations go up.
I like a motion to approve the agreement for provision of limited professional services, Miller and Associates.
Second. A second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Number eleven, discussion action, near local cooperation agreement, Plainview Public Schools, District twenty twenty-five dash one K.
That's hard, this is a school. Okay, so this is the book between us and the school, nothing's changed, everything's the same still. This is essentially just rolling this from laying out by the payment plan, so it goes, gets down to, we get, you know, a monthly bill from our contracts and everything, we'll pay it, since they're our contractors, not the schools, and then we submit invoice to school for half, thirty days, they pay us back, and so it's just a structure on payment schedule, so nothing's changed.
Do you anticipate that the school may not have enough taxes to make their monthly payment?
No, I don't anticipate any of that, nope, I'm sure it'll be just fine.
And if they don't, they just, don't they have a general fund they would take out to make the payment?
I don't know, I'm sure they have plenty of money there.
Yeah, some kind of fund.
But that's not how, that's not what this is telling us about, this is just how, how we're going to bill them, and then they're gonna, I'm assuming, I hope they have, theirs worked out.
Yeah, so if we bill them and they don't pay you, is there something in here that says what happens to them?
Sure.
Well, that's part of the agreement.
That's part of the agreement, yeah, that's what shows them, yep, so they'll pay us within thirty days, yep.
And if they don't, what happens? We get twice as much?
We owe the school.
We don't want the school.
They all go to jail.
Kristy, I'm real focused on them.
You know, a breach of contract.
Breach of contract, thank you.
Kyle looked this up, you know, who later for.
Right around here.
Sounds better.
Yes.
We'll have Kyle, we'll stick Kyle on.
Very good, okay, good.
Before, we already agreed upon the fifty fifty, everybody's, this is just kind of structuring the payment schedule so everyone knows, so there's not a question.
I'm just asking the obvious question.
Nope, your question's good. And no, we will not, we will not seize the school, they can, they can.
No comment.
Just an idea. I move in, we accept the inter-local cooperative agreement for the Plainview and Lincoln Street in Plainview.
Second.
Second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Aye.
Number twelve, discussion and nuisance procedures pertaining to unlicensed and inoperable vehicles.
Okay, so Bob asking work some options for unlicensed and unoperable vehicles for nuisances. I spoke with Kyle, I spoke with a couple other people. Kyle, I'm talking, three, four years ago, we already did it on one of the vehicles that we run now, I'm going to send those to the county. Actually, I'll let Kyle explain the idea there.
Yeah, basically, you send a certified mailing to the last known owner, which you can find based on DMV records. If it's like a vehicle that's been taken pursuant to a municipal ordinance, so like if the car was essentially a nuisance on private land or if it's just been abandoned on public land, it provides a means for the town to either provide notice that they're going to get title to the vehicle, or they're going to conduct a sale of the vehicle and liquidate it. So just provides a means in order to get rid of vehicles that are either nuisances in the town or have been abandoned.
When you say vehicles, you're meaning something with motor or a trailer as well?
It would be motor vehicles, boats, you know, something.
Are these, a trailer's not, a trailer is not considered a motor vehicle?
Right, that's what I meant.
But a camper, if it's like, like a motorhome, like what Bob drives.
Yeah.
Anything without a motor, how about that?
Trailer's not licensed though.
If they're licensed, they're okay.
I think she means if they have like a license plate and they're expired.
But then we send a notice and saying, hey, you need to get your, you need to get this updated.
As long as it's able to be licensed and the DMV can look up the owner, then you can go back on the last owner, send them certified mail, telling them you have thirty days to either come get this or sign title over to us, or we're getting title in our name, and at that point, we get title in our name, it is our property. We can sell it or we can dispose of it.
That's what he was asking, can you do to a trailer, is what he's asking.
Yes, yes, because it's a licensed vehicle, as long as it's a licensed vehicle.
It's not, a trailer's not a vehicle though, it's different.
Just a vehicle.
Well, it's licensed, that's what I'm saying.
But we had that problem with the, earlier, and the trailers we have to handle just a little bit differently. I went and talked to the courthouse, is it the assessor's office where we get our tags?
Treasure.
Treasure, there you go. And they, there's an individual in town who has an abandoned vehicle on his property. Law enforcement has to take over that vehicle that's been abandoned, it's considered abandoned for seven days. We have to intervene, we have to remove that vehicle. And then we can start the process of sending a letter to the owner at the last known address, we have to wait thirty days, and then that vehicle then becomes the property of the city, and the city can do with it what they want. I would, at that point, get a duplicate title or a title so that we do have, we do own that vehicle outright. Now Kyle, when you said inoperable on private property, it's not the same process, correct? Per the ordinance, it's a little bit different, and we do send a letter, and it's thirty days, right? They have to fix the problem, and then we can basically abate it if it's inoperable.
Yeah, if it's, if the vehicle is considered like a nuisance.
Gotcha, okay. I have a letter you guys that I found in a file, and I'll show it to you, Jeremy, all of you guys can look at it. But basically, it just, it says from the Plainview Municipal Code Book, and it has a statute for unlicensed or inoperable vehicles. I think we'll treat the abandoned vehicles just a little bit differently, because I think they're different, right? Inoperable is different than abandoned, I would assume, based on definition. But it states the statute, and then the meat of the letter just basically says the police department is reminding all owners that these vehicles, you have thirty days to fix, to correct the problem, either get them licensed or remove them, or we can fine them up to five hundred dollars a day every twenty-four hours. So that might be something, I can let you guys take a look at it if you'd like. So, um, that might be something, I can let you guys take a look at it if you'd like, it's something you might wanna send certified.
And that's instead of towing then, you're saying?
Yeah, I think maybe send a letter out and give them the thirty days if they're allowed, and then if they don't fix the problem, whether they get it licensed or not, then we'll go, we'll move from there. Um, if they get it licensed, then it's okay, I mean, it's, it's a licensed vehicle.
Isn't the letter the abatement, and then, and then if they don't?
It's just different, this, not abatement, this is just a, a, a notice, like Andrew and I can send however many, a notice to, let's say for example Steve Bedet, saying you've got six vehicles on your property.
Oh, we're not talking about nuisances, okay.
You've got six vehicles that are on your property that are inoperable and, or not licensed, you have thirty days to correct that problem. Um, that thirty-first day, if you don't correct the problem, we will, then we can abate, we can, we can go take it. Or, um, uh, yeah, we can just go take it at that point. But if they fix the problem, if they get it running, or if they get it licensed, then we've solved the problem.
A good way to do it.
Can you have a car that's inoperable but they got it licensed? Can you do that? Can you license a car that's inoperable?
Yes, you can, absolutely.
If you'd like to waste money.
Exactly, Kyle, right, and it has to be insured, cause you have to have insurance to license it.
And then to get insurance on it, somebody'd have to look at it?
No, no, no.
You just have to buy it.
Guys, they get a car wrecker pretty good.
You can cancel the insurance after the first month.
Yeah.
Okay, let's call this discussion for now, we need to jump to number six, public hearing, Creational Street Improvement District, twenty twenty five dash one, Lincoln Avenue and Pine Street. So, I'm sure we'll just open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Sarah. Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Sorry, so that's, um, okay, so yeah, so this is, uh, obviously this is a public district, or this is a improvement district for our bonding for our streets. So that's what we had the resolution for, um, luckily it hadn't even started to work, so we're still definitely plenty good. Um, but this is from, essentially from gate all the way to the manor concrete, and then Pine Street to, to there, so. Something to talk about.
When is the projection of when I have to total work ten minutes earlier?
What road are you taking?
I can't go to the school, I can't go to the road eventually.
Well, in the summer you can go to the school.
They'll be done by school's time.
Yeah, they're supposed to be done by September.
Okay, cause I know you had a meeting with the school on something else and they thought, I just, I also know we haven't started yet, so.
Yeah, their goal is to be done by, hopefully September sometime, um, I believe it's on Friday, so I will, hopefully, anytime now, I'm betting they've probably been a little delayed cause of all the rain this summer on their projects, so, but they don't project to be very long.
The public comment?
Is this the same time that the drainage things are gonna be put in also?
Yep, all in one shot, yep, everything is included in there.
That'd be awesome.
Yes.
Yep, this is just covering our side, so.
A long time coming, really.
And this is just to clarify a question I got to me from the public, when those drains, where are they gonna drain? Somebody thinks it's gonna go right into Endout's basement. That's what they said.
So they're gonna flood the football field?
Well, last time I, well, I think we engineered it like that, but.
I said, well, that's what we paid engineers for, well, they, well, they don't always know what they're doing.
Oh, of course not.
Said, you would pay them a lot of money for not knowing what they're doing.
I would bet if her basement's gonna flood, probably by the last night.
Yeah, yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that, I'm just asking that, cause somebody said, well, where are you gonna send that? You know why it doesn't go where you want it to go.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, it's true.
It can go anywhere.
Yeah. Hopefully not. Well, that'll be nice to see the three drains put in, I think.
Absolutely.
So when are they starting this year?
July, next week, December.
Ho, hopefully, well, I don't, we have a meeting Friday, hopefully next week though, but we'll find out more after.
Okay. Any more discussion? That's good, motion to come out of public hearing?
Make the motion to come out of public hearing.
Second.
A second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
So we'll do number seven then, discussion action resolution number seven two seven, confirmation of street improvement district, twenty twenty five dash one, Lincoln Avenue and Pine Street.
Make a motion to approve resolution seven two seven?
Second.
A second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Green. Jody.
Aye.
Number eight, discussion action ordinance number ten eleven, issuing bond anticipation notes, series twenty twenty five, in amount of not, in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance one ten eleven.
Second.
Second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Tyler.
Make a motion to waive second and third hearings for ordinance ten eleven?
Second.
A second.
Sarah.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Okay, now we can go back down to number twelve, discussion nuisance procedures pertaining to unlicensed and inoperable vehicles.
So the only question I have is if, if or when to tow them, if we decide to, or we can take the route of finding. I talked to our insurance, we don't tow to our own property, is that it's, the insurance company will not insure us for illegal vehicles on our property after we tow them. Um, so we could, we could, I've looked into it, you could have a, a tow company come in, tow them, haul them away, and then if, I talked to like Tyler, well, just tell me like they, what they did is, um, when they got the title, they gave the tow company the title in lieu of the tow charges, the storage and all that, so. If you could have that agreement beforehand, when they towed it, they would know that either that person would pay their dues and take the car back, the vehicle back, or they would eventually get the title for in lieu of paying, so.
But then why would we tow it to, I guess?
They, the tow company would tow them to their own law.
To their own, their own head shirt law, yeah, yeah.
Jimson Towing likes that with the title, if they can get the title we give to them, they'll definitely keep it, and then he'll get the money for the straps, so that would cover the tow costs.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
So we should proceed by getting a letter, correct?
Which I gave Jeremy the copy of one, he can look at it, and he's okay with that?
That we can vote on next month?
Maybe, I think. If you wanna pass it on, if you guys wanna look at the letter, he can pass it on to you guys.
Do you have to list the towers' name or just list a tow company, a towing company?
Do I, I'm sorry, what?
Do you have to, in, is this gonna be a resolution?
We're not, you're not voting on anything, just standing dusting.
We're just discussing.
Next, next, but next month, in this letter that we're writing, do you have to identify the towing company or can you just say a towing company? Do we have more than one?
Well, we don't have any here.
Well, there's more than one.
We use, we use, uh, D and L out of Norfolk, Jimson Towing, and All Hours Towing. All Hours Towing is out of Randolph, Jimson, Jimson Towing is between Royal and Orchard, um, and D and L, like I said, is out of Norfolk. Like to share the wealth, you know, I mean, we don't like to just use the one, sometimes some are busy, they can't get them, so they'll, we'll go with somebody else, but.
So the letter would say your vehicle will be removed by a towing company?
Right, yes.
That's what I mean.
I would assume you'd have that agreement with them before we did anything, that title in lieu of payments, cause you don't, if they charge a natural, non, non-legal amount of money, I mean, they, might just say, no, you'll keep the title.
And if that person does not have the title, to that car?
That's, well, that's the process, we do obtain it.
Apply those state statutes, they're by means for the city to obtain the title.
And this is a form that I, that the, um, treasurer's office gave me to request that, after we've gone through the proper channels of notifying that the last known owner of the last known address, so.
To, to answer your question, Tyler, it works on motor vehicles, ATVs, ETVs, mini bikes and mobile homes, so I don't think it would apply to just a trailer, camper truck.
So mobile homes as in campers?
Yeah.
You had to, cause they could be able to drive it, right?
Just kind of a motor.
Uh huh.
Oh, just motor.
Yep.
Do you want something to raise them, to fit into the year?
I know what you have in mind, and, I mean, it's, and I believe.
Cause you said something last meeting about that.
Use, yeah, use this property, yeah, so.
Have you had any, have you ever done letters like this before?
I feel like it was, I was talking to Jeremy, we did one like four years ago.
We just did one.
Has it been that long?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can revive one and bring it back next month?
Yeah. That'd work.
And so this one just doesn't cover the, uh, abandoned one?
That's because aban, abandoned is different. If it's abandoned on public or, or private, law enforcement has to take over, and that's what I'm working right now. That's inoperable and unregistered. The abandoned, and this is straight from the treasurer's office, it has to be law enforcement that takes care of that vehicles, like they told me, in order for me to get a duplicate title. So I'd have to send a letter to the last known, I mean, we can get the owner off the VIN, or we can run, they can run the VIN and we can run the license plate, and if we have it. We can send a certified letter to the last known address, and if it comes back after thirty days, we don't hear anything, then they will issue us a duplicate title. And then that, i- in the name of the city of Plankview, and we own that vehicle at that point in time. Problem is, is where do we tow them? Where are we gonna keep them?
You don't want them in the same place?
Can we sell them? Can the city sell them?
Af- after we get the title, yes, yep.
Yes.
So we would get the title before we remove it?
No, we can, we can tow it immediately.
So then what do we do with inoperable then? I guess I'm, I was thinking there, so what do you do with inoperable ones?
I mean, wait, thirty days, you have to give them thirty days.
But then we do the same thing though?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
But do the thing abandoned, could possibly be stolen too.
Exactly, that's why law enforcement, that's what they explained to me.
That's why you guys get.
Inoperable vehicle to me means that person that's on that property owns that, huh, whatever, so.
Right.
They could judge by the weeds.
I mean.
So we're just unlicensed then?
And tell them they, they have thirty days to get a license, and then if they don't, same way as inoperable, treat it just like an inoperable.
Yeah.
But they have to have it insured to get a license.
Yeah.
Then you tow it after thirty days.
You said they will tow it after thirty days, yes.
I can see money coming in right now.
Oh yeah, we're gonna make bank on this screen, I'm just saying.
Right, I'm gonna die.
We're gonna lose money on this.
So, okay, sounds good. Number thirteen, discussion budget fiscal year twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six.
All right, so we're still early on yet, um, with the lottery board meeting last night, we're still early on yet. Um, I'd really like to schedule a workshop slash walkthrough here, I know Bob's gonna be gone for like until the next meeting, but, we can either do it, we could probably do it after actually that meeting, after the next meeting, sometime mid-August. Hopefully we'll have our evaluations coming from the county then, we'll know where we're sitting at for taxes. Um, really not looking like a large fancy year for budget, obviously we have our wells coming in, eight million dollars affluent, eight hundred nine are applied by the time you have engineering, um, we still hope to fix up some of the things that we haven't finished up this year due to the lack of work, but we're still trying to get that done, um, some of the bigger items that are, I would say bigger, over like twenty thousand. I'd like to look at trading our skids here in, renew it, tracks are getting old, get it while it's still decent value. Um, I think the library parking lot's doable, where they have their own set of money from us, so it's, this parking lot over here, purchase, you know, start moving on it. Uh, I think the foundation's still talking about their meeting area. And we'd like to put some more money into Camry and Sewers, um, we're really starting to need to work on the things that you don't always get a seat and have a good time at, crack filling, things like that, we haven't done that in a while, kind of pushing that off, it's probably time to start revamping those kind of things. Other than that, uh, if you wanna look at the generator, we talked about two last year, we never did the police station slash, uh, shop. We can look at that if we want to, we'll see how the money comes out, we haven't gotten that far yet. And then, um, ball field, so I talked to ball field people, uh, softball, we need to really address the ball field lights, we always try to fix them up, they are obsolete now. So we need to fix at least the infield, the outfield's decent, with the infield, they said it's getting a spot where they can't have night games, they won't be able to next year due to safety reasons. So we do have those lights from the, from the football stadium, we'd like to look into those, um, we'd get an electrician, obviously, to look into them, see if they work, they should, but we don't know, obviously, how they were taken down, we saved them all, but if they were dropped, dropped from the sky, they might not be punctured. So that, then we'll do that west entrance over there, talking about sidewalks and stuff, but we're still working on money for that, so, those are, I would say, our main.
Troy would like you to look at a trailer too, he said the second trailer is probably not gonna be DOT compliant here shortly.
Um, actually, I've actually already talked to, uh, Chad Stier, and they can make the other one already DOT, DOT compliant with about twenty five hundred bucks worth, so.
Okay.
We'll be good to go, watch out for trailers right there.
When do you plan on having the first, uh, budget workshop?
Um, if you wanna wait for Bob to be back, it'll be, I don't know where our next council meeting is, it can either be first of August, it can be middle of August, it can be somewhere right in there.
I would really like to do it sooner, you know, as soon as you get back.
Yep.
I mean, I've got a lot of questions and I really wanna hash it out at a workshop where we're all together, so, I mean, that way by the time it comes to actually approving the budget, we have everything pretty much buttoned up and ready to go.
I can't see him, no, I'm ahead.
I know, I hear you, I hear it nodding.
I know.
Those marbles.
Um, is there some time in the near future or far future, that local street uptown?
Where, where at local street uptown?
Right in front of Serendipity, if you're really wanting to know.
Well, I, I guess, I know, I know where you're talking.
Well, you just said, when you saw the videos of Cloud Day, you know, it's whoever put it on Facebook, it really looks bad, and when you look at it, it's pretty much falling apart. So, that's probably the street department, and so, is that a, a thing that's gonna happen in the next five years or twenty years?
That's a question for the council on one and six, isn't it?
Not focused, you're just fixing it.
You, you have to fix the whole street?
Yeah, but you're not on the one and six though.
If you're gonna tear it up, then you're gonna, then you're gonna probably water it, stir it while you have it open, I mean, you're talking like, you're not just gonna, it's not.
But what, it need to go on the one and six, it's already paved, right?
Well, I mean, it'd be, it'd be a whole paving, just, I mean, it'd be repaving everything. I mean, you're not just gonna patch it there, is that where you're?
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you're talking like.
Are we gonna do all of Locust then? I mean, Walbrad it?
It's up to the coun, this is up to the council.
Well, not all of it's that bad.
I would say let's not look after this budget season, um, but we could sure start.
Right. We need a while first.
Bring that up in about three years.
Yeah.
Or more.
When, when Tyler's not.
I'm just saying, there's something that looks like it's gonna be coming up, you know?
Yep.
When you hear those trucks go by, they really make a lot of noise. By the way, speaking of that, they're not even supposed to be up there, are they?
Mm.
Big trucks, aren't they supposed to take the truck out?
That's, that's a police officer question?
I don't know what the tr, I honestly, I'll be, I do not know what the truck routes are, I have no idea.
Yeah, there is one.
I, I would say where you have a.
What is it? I don't know what it is, I have no clue.
But you have a business that operates on trucks though, like tires and stuff, I don't know how you, you can't.
I mean, if you.
Well, I'm not talking about the, the food truck and, and that, I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about the side by sides and the dumpsters and them.
Oh, the side dumpers, you mean?
Yeah.
Like the grain trucks, if they're going that way, probably going down to Getzinger's, they probably should come up west and maybe, uh, what is it, Ash Street?
Line, I think Line Street's one of those trucks.
Line Street, I don't know, I, I have no idea, I don't know, I, I'm embarrassed to say I don't know what the truck, truck route is.
Well, they're signed up, but I can't tell you exactly what's south.
Is it okay if they come get wrecked or so?
They could.
We'll call it a wash then, right? You know, strictly, I, I don't know, so maybe if somebody can enlighten me what the truck routes are, maybe we can enforce it a little bit, but I have no idea what they are.
I know there's signs up, but I cannot tell you exactly what it is, do you know?
I have no idea.
You're the mayor.
I have no idea.
You've been here for fifty thousand years, you should know what the truck routes are.
I know that it's Line Street, it's on the south, I know that.
It's not in front of Serendipity.
Yeah.
It's not.
I moved a truck, there's like a truck route on Line Street, cause there's a, literally a slot.
Not really been talked about.
But.
I know, Line Street, Congress.
Okay, Congress.
Congress, that's one of them.
But then Ash runs into, like, you've got Locust, and then isn't that Ash, and then West Street? Am I wrong? Fine, there you go, there you go.
That sounds like a good thing for a councilperson to check out.
First of all, you're good for that.
You already did, thanks for not. Truck routes and.
What's your?
Surely, we have a map of where the truck routes are. Surely.
I don't know where it's at.
Surely.
Huh? Well, it probably does.
Surely. You'd have it in a resolution if you had a truck route somewhere, so.
It's gotta be something.
We've had that for a while though, how far away back do I have to look? We've had that for a while though, how far away back do I have to look? Just in the resolution, and there's no map, I can tell you that in the resolution book.
Isn't there a truck route up by the Manor?
Well, just my trucks, that come through like food trucks like you said.
Yeah, but that's not a route, it doesn't say trucker, I know I've seen the sign, I'll have to go out there and look tonight.
Used to be an emergency route, is what that's, it used to be and it's not there, no harm, or not even born of, I just don't remember the map, thanks.
Who's our street supervisor?
James.
James does streets.
Well. That's who needs to tell us that.
Are you passing the buck?
I am, I can cap. I'll ask James, well, I can't now cause he's got a sore tooth, but I'll ask. Some place.
Future discussion.
Right.
Fourteen, council comments.
I think we just.
So the August work, budget workshop we all go to or how?
If you wanna know what's going on, you better come.
Well, I was just wondering.
Well, like, like that first week in August, I'll be out.
We mean on the twelve is our actual meetings.
Okay, Monday if you're gonna say.
Yep.
The six I can't do it.
And at the end of July works better, we can, we can start there, we go to have multiple ones, we can.
I'd like to continue as I can, I'm dumb, I'm saying.
So.
Can't ask too many questions, no. Courtney, is the software stuff thing in yet or not yet?
Uh, I just, Kyle and I okayed the contract last week and the invoice, I just, well, may all pay that off this week to them, so.
And they have to come in.
And then they'll come and do a one day training, um, and the rest will all be online, but should be up and going hopefully in the next couple of months, so. Good. And Arnie and Larry will be gone Thursday, they have to go do their annual four hours of continuing education training in Norfolk, so. They'll be gone in the morning on Thursday, so there's no handicap on Thursday mornings, so just in case anybody calls, it's out of commission until about one o'clock.
Thing they do, that was in the school. Good thing they do in the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, okay. Okay, number fifteen, public comments, anyone from the public wish to comment on anything?
I just had a question regarding the ball fields, cause there's a couple more things that maybe need to be looked at, the bathrooms being finished or the remodel project that was kinda talked about down there. And then one scoreboard's not working right either, or not working at all, so something that might have to be looked at too through the budget process. I mean, we had just a lot of problems this summer, being down there a lot with people shutting off the water, the hose, so if how we're gonna get real water to them. There was po- maybe a lot of good comments about them.
Yep.
But no handicap accessibility yet down there and people would just shut off the hydrant or use it for their own, even though notes were taped and everything else, I know the fall back has had a lot of problems with that.
So there's more down there, those just the big ticket items, so there's more scheduled down there, so. The scoreboard.
Have the fall back or scrapped, you know, that thirty thousand dollar bathroom they were gonna do? Have they scrapped that idea? Do we know it?
I don't think they will.
We need to have a report from them at least once a year, in my opinion. Just noted.
So I have a question about ordinances, I don't know if this is where I should talk about or if I should have done it in my report, but there's some changes in even like the police department ordinances that need to be fixed. There, there's some that are obsolete, um, but I think, I don't know what it would cost to change ordinance, I have no idea what it would cost to update the ordinance. I don't wanna just say, okay, this needs to be fixed when there's a whole bunch that needs to be fixed, so how do we go about, I mean, is that something we talk about at the budget or?
It's better to do a lot of them at one time because.
What, is it cheaper?
They charge me for one ordinance to publish it in the book or for ten, it's not much difference cost, so I'd rather do, if there's updates that need to be done for water or sewer, anything, we should do them all at the same time because. I send them all to, and it's easier for them to sit there and go through all of it at one time instead of one ordinance every single month and then they're continually updating our ordinance book. Cause then they're gonna mail you new, mail you new sheets to put in your book and update the online, so if we're gonna do a bunch, I'd rather we just do them all at one time.
I'll just keep compiling it then and then we'll.
Does it cost to take an ordinance out of the book?
No.
We have three of them, can't come up.
No.
Well, I just hate to quote ordinances to people when they question me on it and I look like a fool, or look stupid because it's outdated or incorrect, you know? So, um, maybe I, how do we go about doing that? Do we get together collectively and do that as a group or do we talk to each department or how do we, how do we do that, Courtney?
I think maybe, I think maybe we just go through like, I think there's twelve, twelve chapters and just go through.
Chapters, yeah.
Bring your recommendations.
Chapter one, are there any that we need to?
To the council.
To the council.
Yeah.
And then we can kinda discuss it, which, and then we'll.
Okay.
Give it to Kyle.
Give it to Kyle.
Yeah.
Perfect, alright, I just.
Yeah, that's how.
I mean, most of them are, a lot of them anymore are state statutes, so you're not changing anything on them, but like the ones that are ours, like our water rates, our sewer rates, when our payments are due. That, that's all, yes, that's all ours, I'd rather just do those all at one time, so they're all up to date, um, so that, those are correct.
Yeah, next council meeting.
Okay, alright.
Bring all your recommendations.
Yeah.
We can review them.
Perfect, alright, I just wanted to talk about that and.
Anybody else? Motion, Roger. No motion made.
So we have a couple of places that really is getting tall grass and I know you've been sure, but how are them, do we send those girls into tall grass? Or is that too much, is that too much of a liability?
At, no, after we send those everything, for, you know, we have before.
Yeah. And we'd be.
We usually send a shred run first.
But the girls don't run that, do they?
Yep.
Did you guys do the trailer corner or did they do that?
Eye contact and personally. So that was, that was a little transition, you know, that was, um, they transitioned owners and stuff, so there was kind of a, a lull in there, so.
Which one was that?
The brown, he bought that brown one on the corner.
Oh, yeah.
And so.
He said this, I've had trailers pretty new.
It's brand new.
Yeah.
Well, it's taken a lot of damage.
Everybody.
So, yeah. Um, I. Forbes did, I think, I don't know if it was Warren or Garrett who went down and they, but they cut Brandon's property, I went and talked to Julie. I don't know Jeremy how to get a hold, I s- I called, uh, the attorney out of Omaha that is the probate for the Higgins property next to Mary's. I've not heard anything back from them, I don't know what to do at this point, I mean.
No, we didn't.
Would we?
No, no, Julie got a hold of, but, um, I don't know how to do the Higgins property, cause Deborah has deceased, is deceased, the property's still in her name. Um, so I don't know what we do, I, I say just.
That's a God question right there.
Uh, one oh six Southwest Street, she, um, she passed away last November and the weeds are really tall. And some, somewhere she had left the house to a family member, but it's not been changed on the, uh, this would be the Cessar, the Cessar's website. So it's still in her name, so I don't know who to send a letter to at this point to advise, hey, you need to cut the grass. I mean, I can try to talk to the brother, but he has shown nothing but great disdain towards me, few choice words here in this one.
Is the bank selling that property or is?
I thought it was supposed to go up to auction in last month.
Yeah.
But I don't know what's happened to it at this point, um.
At this point, I'm just wanting to pay for the, whatever grass cutting needs to be done, cause there's wild animals living in it.
I was just gonna say, just for your property or downtown, we could all go clean that up.
And the house that's done with it, I can't remember her name.
The garbage need, can we just abate it? The garbage needs to be taken out as well.
Yeah. Can we just do that and just keep it?
Isn't there a mattress on?
Well, you have to send a baiting notice.
Yeah. We have to do the legal.
Yeah.
Can we just do that, please?
As soon as we find out who, how, who, who goes to.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we have noticed, notified after I'm there, yeah.
I mean, they're not.
Just post it then, yeah.
Oh, yeah, on the door, okay.
And then we can, because the garbage is full on the south side, there's a mattress laying there, there's stuff in the backyard underneath all the weeds, so if we could abate the property, that would be amazing.
House to the north of it as well.
Yeah.
Um, but she's, she's there and I can remember I'd have to leave card after card after card, she'd never return my call or anything, so. Probably send a, post that too, I would guess, maybe one oh four.
Mm-hmm.
Southwest, I think it's the.
Yeah, cause last year when we needed something, her vehicle moved, you kept tapping into.
Yeah, when I finally put the notice on there, saying I'm gonna tow it, she got out there and got it taken care of, but.
Yeah.
Um, just we'll get a letter from you Jeremy for that one oh four Southwest Street property and post that too. And we can go in and cut grass.
For the pavement?
Weeds, they're.
For the weeds for the one oh four, abating out.
And one oh six.
Six.
Do you guys do the abate?
We'll just post it, we'll try to deliver, Jeremy gets us the letter, he's got the letter for the weeds and such and then.
Insert the mattress. What about the mattress though?
That'll have to be.
Well, they'll just post it and then.
Yeah, cause.
Do it all.
Yeah, we can do it all.
So then you're gonna bait it then?
One oh six, one oh four is a.
Yeah, one oh four is weeds, one oh six is a baiting.
Okay.
And.
Please, I'm sorry, we're throwing a lot of addresses out.
Nobody in either one of you.
Uh, one oh four there is, but she doesn't ever answer the door and never see her.
She doesn't return calls, I, I le- I leave cards, nothing, so.
Old lady is she?
I, I don't.
We've never seen her.
I have no idea. I know that she's there because the car moves, leaves premises, but I mean, I have never had a conversation with the woman.
I don't know if she works nights or what.
I don't know.
I've never seen her, so.
I don't know anymore weeds, what are the weeds? Oh, okay, public comment. So a complaint came into the city office that a member that works for the city had a four foot weed in their front yard. It turned out to be a sunflower. Now this individual that makes the complaints complains about sticks in the street, calls the city, hey, pick up the, need to have somebody go out there and pick up sticks and stuff and quite frankly, I'm getting tired of it, so. Um, I just want it to be on record that it's not gonna hurt you to pick up a stick in the middle of the street instead of calling the city and complaining that there's a stick in the street. We do the best that we can picking up trash cans, dead, Andrew and I pick up, I don't count any dead animals, well, I know I do, um, in the street, if we see it, we clean it up. It's not that hard to do an abley thing and pick up a stick or go pull a lead or something. So I'm off my soapbox, just, my God, stop calling the city for something like that and do it yourself.
Do any of you guys that you have problems with turkeys?
Turkeys?
On my lawn and on my deck and on my roof, yeah.
So no.
Well, I don't know if you weed gardens, if you've got a garden.
I, I will not weed a garden out if, well, wait till we're done.
Yeah, I mean, they're all over.
There's a lot of them.
Yeah.
I'll chase someone around next.
Did you?
Well, I mean, we can have.
No.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
You know what, Tyler, they've been coming down that field.
Yes.
Yeah.
And you know, since the transit company has cut all that stuff back.
They can go wherever, all over town.
Push them out.
But.
I'm just saying we have an ordinance against chickens running around.
But we don't.
Wild, like the turkeys.
Nobody needs them.
Wild, like.
Kind of encroaching on their, everywhere they were.
Okay, I guess, okay, I'm done.
I know that we, uh, adjourn.
Second.
Second.